I'd like to welcome everybody to our the regular meeting of the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees. It's September 16th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Usain Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald.
She's in the building. We expect her momentarily.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Adam Mosip.
Here.
James Thorpe, here. Chair Mary Pedlicov.
Here. Next, please.
Approval of minutes for the following Henry Ford College Board of Trustee Meetings, the Policy Committee Special Meeting, August 12th, 2019, and the regular meeting, August 12th, 2019. Recommended action is to make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support?
All right, well, I hate to move without her. Are there any corrections or additions? I got, I got the, I got, I got the ghost mic. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, thank you. Touch a unanimous roll, please. Next.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, President Cavalluna, Chair Pedlicov, and members of the board. My name is Bihal Halimi. I am a Dearborn resident and HFC student studying biology. I'm originally from Mississippi. I moved to Dearborn with my family last year after finishing high school. I am now entering my second year at HFC and plan to pursue pre-med after I have completed my studies here. I carry a 3.3 GPA and I'm a member of the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society and I'm the president of the Arab Student Association. I also work in the Welcome Center as a student ambassador. Now, I'm pleased to read the, to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. Congratulations to Chef Jabalonsky on his nomination for Pastry Chef of the Year for the Michigan Chef de Cuisine Association. Awards will be presented on September 30. Congratulations to HFC wrestling coach Grant McKinsey after an intensive training period at the United States Olympic Center. Grant earned his Silver Certification in Coaching. Congratulations to Dr. Calvin Harville on being selected to attend the CBMA Third Annual Rumble Young Men Rumble in Detroit. This is a pre-med gathering of cross-sector leader in the blackmail, in the blackmail achievement field and movement. The Rumbles are designed to ensure the Detroit's hometown leaders get the count, get the connection, commitment, conditioning, and collaboration needed to make sure that Detroit's black men and boys thrive and flourish. The Respiratory Therapist Program was awarded the Distinguished Registration Respiratory Therapist Credentilating Success Award by the Commission on Programs Across the Nation That Have Met or Exceed All the Establishment Program Outcome Thresholds and Have More Than Ninety Percent of Their Graduates Earning the RRT Credential. The second, the School of BEPD was awarded four grants for, from the City of Detroit, Detroit Employment Solutions Cooperation for Adult Education in Automotive Technology, Robotics, and Culinary Arts. Goodwill Industries of Greater Detroit and General Motors for Adult Education in Automotive Technology and the, and the City of Detroit Employment Solutions Cooperation. The grant award represented was $962,187 to the college serving 311 students. Welcome Back Day started today and runs through Saturday, September 21st. This week-long event is to introduce students to the many programs and services available at HFC. Activities planned include HFC chorus performances and a club fair, stage shows, photo booth making, the TI, t-shirts, and more. Student support representatives will be in attendance to distribute literature and answer questions. All these activities are intended to make our students feel welcomed and valued at Henry Ford College. Thank you for the opportunity to, for me to be this month's reader. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Yes.
Nobody escapes.
That's cool.
Is, Ms., I should say, President Al Halimi?
Yes, sir.
Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, sir.
When was your election to be the president of the Arab Student Association?
It was last week.
Last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First week is the hardest as president.
Does that mean it's over with?
What, where are you from in Mississippi?
I'm from Holly Springs.
Okay. How do you find the north?
It's interesting. I love the weather here.
You have a 3.3 grade point average. Congratulations. What, when, when do you plan to leave HFC?
I was planning to get my associate degree and then-
Good answer.
And then transfer to a M hopefully.
Okay. Do you know when you plan to do that?
Hopefully by next spring or summer, I should be done.
Okay. You said you want a career in medicine, is that right?
Yes, sir.
What, what would be the favorite thing if you had that come true? What would be your favorite, favorite job?
I want to be, I want to become a pediatrician.
Oh.
So I can help kids, especially like kids that are like go through war and stuff like that. I wanted to join the Doctors Without Borders Association and help with that. So, yeah.
What sparked your interest in that type of practice?
Because I'm from Yemen, so I've seen a lot of kids that don't get treated well because of the low medical stuff there.
Care available.
Yeah, so that what inspired me to do this as a career.
Okay. How many terms have you been here at HFC?
This will be my third.
Okay. Have there been any instructors that have been particularly good and rewarding to be in their class?
Let me remember their names. Okay, Ms. Brandt, I took her for biology.
Linda Brandt?
Yes.
Yeah, Biology?
I took her for Biology 150. I always forget this lady's name.
You can email me. How's that?
Okay, cool.
Because I want to meet with-
Well, do you have a refresher?
I want to meet with the Arab Student Association and I appreciate you reading today and I'm very proud to have you at our college.
All right. Thank you so much.
And if there's anything any of us can do to help you, please let us know. And keep, keep, keep it up. 3.3 and I want to hand you a diploma.
Okay, I got you. All right. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next item, please.
President's items.
Thank you, Trustee Thorpe, Madam Chair. I have several things I want to address with the board. I'll try to be quick. The first is related to the budget and in your packet you will have several documents that you should be at least familiar with the format. The multicolored page is the report on cash position for the college throughout the year and you'll see that it continues to be a strong position and if you have any questions about it, I will be happy to answer them. Just know that this is, again, part of our processes that Vice President Sattkovsky puts before me every week and before you every month to make sure that we never slip in the direction that we had when we had a bad debt crisis. And I'll just say, the bad debt has become such a non-issue by such great stewardship of our financial resources that we're down into the, the place of around $800,000 a year, down from our high watermark of north of, I believe, $11 million. And I was telling someone the other day that, that's such good work that there, that the bad debt being that low is, is almost like there's no more fruit, or no more juice in the fruit to squeeze. So that's something I'm proud of and I mentioned recently in the state of the college. The other document that you have here is the summary of the general fund report. You're, you'll see that the tuition and fees are, and that's the top line of numbers. If you move to the right, to the budget as of 31 August, by the end of August, and that's what this report shows, we were, if we were on budget, we would have a little over $22 million and we have a little more than $23 million, which is 4.3% more than we budgeted. And that shouldn't be a surprise to you all because I was proud to report to you all between now and our last meeting that the enrollment at the college was a little more than one and a quarter percent more than last fall. And of course, this board passed a budget that was estimating enrollment to be down 3%. So we are not down 3%, we're actually up a little bit more than one and a quarter, which gives you that over-budget of 4.3%. And again, this is a snapshot at the end of August. So you'll see that that's where the revenue hits and that's where we're above budget. I would also note that the increased enrollment is very likely to be something that we will give you a report on in depth in future board meetings. I'll be making a public statement to the entire college about that, much like I made to you all individually via email. And I looked at the, at the history of this institution and not since 2009 have we seen increased enrollment in credit hours when looking at the previous fall. The last time fall-to-fall went up was 2009. So that's borne out in this budget document and it is something that I think is a strong, strong indication of where we're headed as a college. I want to address what is probably the most difficult thing to address as the leader of this college and that is when we, we face the loss of one of our colleagues. For those of you who knew Randall Ironman, you knew a smart, loyal, hard-working, good person and he was such that, that after he spent his first tenure at our college, he left to take a job in a, in another employer and when he wasn't as happy there as he thought he was at Henry Ford College, we snatched him back up and we brought him back. And in my short time here as your president, I gained a fond friendship for him. In fact, he was the person that his boss, and he worked, Randall worked in the IT department. And his boss selected him to greet me on my first day, to make sure that the IT equipment was working. And I remember meeting him and if you knew Randall, you, you saw a big smile. He was kind of a slight man who had a smile that seemed to go literally from ear to ear and he was nervous. And I'll be candid, so was I. And he was in my office, Kathy must have been at least, at least half the day that day. And it was just a really nice opportunity to get to know someone. I learned about his son Eli. I learned about the trip that he planned to take with Eli that next summer. And then after he left, I watched as, whenever there was a problem with any internet or technical equipment, Kathy would always call on Randall. And I, I tend to try to be relatively perceptive and I, I learned that she did that on purpose. And it wasn't because there wasn't people in that department that could solve the needs that she had, it was that she came to trust that Randall would do it most quickly and most, most correctly. And I, I'll tell you, since, since he's passed, I've learned that, he must have been running around the campus quite a bit because that was his reputation with everybody. And I'll, I'll tell you without getting into personal details that he, he fell ill and, and went to the hospital and was, was rather quickly and surprisingly in a place where we knew we were going to lose our friend and colleague. And over the last month, that's now happened. Randall was a teammate and he lived that out. And I tried hard to foster a culture here that, that supports that. And the way you honor a teammate when they do good work or when they leave your service is to think about them, say what you cared about. And this board is not a religious body, but in honor of Randall, I would ask that we would slow our minds and thoughts and think about him for a minute. And I'd ask you, Madam Chair, if we could do that now?
Yes, a moment of silence, please.
So for those of you that are interested in Randall and his family, we've kept, his son and wife both work at the institution. We've kept in contact with them and are supporting them and as soon as we know funeral service information, I'll report that to the board and to the college.
Was he able to take the trip that he had planned?
Yeah, they went to the Grand Canyon. And I met with his son two weeks ago and his son was doing about as well as, as he could, but he still talked about that trip and how his dad was a force of strength for him in his life and, yeah, they, they took that trip and I, I don't know if Julie went with them. Do you know Kathy? So there's really no good segue or transition from that. So I'll just move to something that, from sad and solace to something I'm proud of and happy about. And that is, we, we hosted a seminar today in the Welcome Center for our Financial Literacy Programming. And that was the product of a meeting that I had with the new State Treasurer, Rachel Eubanks, who is interested in finding a way to work with educational institutions to identify ways to better educate the citizenry on financial literacy. I thought it was a very, very useful event. There were actually two cabinet members from the governor's cabinet that were there who were vastly overshadowed by the two board members from our Board of Trustees who were there.
Of course.
Our, our chair, Trustee Pedlicov was there and her colleague, Trustee Roxanne McDonald were there and they watched the entire event in the morning. We had a panel with people on the cutting edge of expertise in financial literacy from literally kindergarten until retirement. And then we had a facilitated session up with a smaller group, kind of giving us feedback and ideas about how our, our class, where we teach personal finance is strong and where it is not strong, but also where higher ed should move to deliver the right kind of curriculum on that, on that point. And if you, if you've never seen great facilitation, you missed it today because Michael Nealan was there and he's a fantastic facilitator. He's a passionate educator and a very, very effective communicator. He did that today and I gotta say, it was a real feat because as you may or may not know, he's, he's struggling with an ailment in his back and he still walked around that room, played Phil Donahue like the best of him. And you made us look good, Dr. Nealan. I'm not surprised, but I'm always happy to see when you have the mic and you can direct us. So that was a point of pride for, for the day here today. And as I was telling the chair, I'm always proud when people from outside of the institution come and see the institution because I, I think they leave and I saw it today. They leave thinking that's a place where good education happens. That's a place where passionate people care about student success and are willing to innovate. And I, I know that that happened today. Over the last month, I, I gave the state of the college and I was happy and pleased to have Trustees Thorpe, Lane, and, I'm sorry, Trustees Thorpe and Mead. And Trustee Lane hid in the back. I didn't know she was there until I saw her bicycle in the, in the locker.
The giveaway.
The giveaway to know she's attending. But I was happy to, to have that opportunity to speak to the college. And one of the things that I touched upon was enrollment. Another thing I touched upon was an upcoming visit by the Higher Learning Commission for accreditation analysis. And I've talked to several of you trustees about that. And I do want to advise you that over the next couple of months, I'll be setting up opportunities to meet you in, in small groups that are below a quorum for this board to help you understand what, what will happen when the Higher Learning Commission comes and visits us and what the, the visiting team may ask of you and-
Just what to expect so that we're all up to snuff with, with any of the issues.
So look for that and I, I know that our team has been working hard. The two real, the two real hard workers on this are Dr. Lori Gonco and English faculty Betsy Cohn. And I, I simply just can't say how grateful I am for their hard work on this. That's a good segue for me to say, we've had a couple announcements that I'm quite proud of and they're people who are now been appointed to vice presidents at our college. I have communicated this to you individually and I've communicated to the college, but I haven't said it publicly and frankly, it's something that I'm proud of, so I just want to say it publicly. These are two people who have earned my trust and have earned their colleagues' trusts. I'll take them in order. One is Dr. Lori Gonco. She took the interim vice president position near the beginning of this year, was that right, Dr. Gonco? And she took on some, some big tasks and, and some big shoes. You remember that Becky Chadwick left the college to some other institution with a block M? And, you know, it was, it was Becky Chadwick's strong recommendation of Dr. Gonco that, that led to her appointment as an interim vice president. And she has managed data. She has managed the information campaign for the Milage Campaign that we managed last year. And most importantly, she's been digging hard in drafting and working through the Higher Learning Commission's analysis of our institution and she'll be working hard on that going forward. She most recently took up an important analysis of our HR department, engaging a consultant, trying to help analyze what's working well and what's, what's, what can be improved in that department. And she's now going through a leadership training module at the Michigan Community College Association. She's the, the only person I sent there this year because I, I wanted her to gain from that as our sole representative. And so I hope what you can see is that I have immense trust in her and that was only doubled and tripled when I went to each of the Collective Bargaining Unit Presidents and asked for their feedback about her conduct and performance. And I went to every one of her colleagues on the cabinet to ask whether she was a good teammate and whether she was worthy of having the interim title removed from her title. And I'm proud to say that she has. So, Dr. Gonco, thank you and congratulations. Now, another person who has a similar story and a similar outcome is Amy Clark. And she, of course, has a Juris Doctor and she has served this institution for several years. She was, she had the position less than vice president was frankly doing that work since the time I arrived here more than a year ago. And she, with Dr. Gonco, was taking on this big lift of evaluating the HR team and doing that in a professional and dignified manner. But frankly, before that, she had been serving this board as its lawyer with dignity and integrity. She was briefing you all in closed sessions on some pretty intense, difficult litigation. She was supporting you all in evaluating the bylaws of this institution. And I'll be candid with you, she was giving me advice as a new president and frankly, playing the role of a full vice president before she had that title. And like Dr. Gonco, I went to each of the Collective Bargaining Units and their leadership and said, what do you think of this person's performance and do you trust them? Do you think that they're wise? Do you think that they're fair? And I did the same questioning of the other vice presidents of the college. And there was unanimous support for Amy to become a vice president. And so you may recall that the previous person to hold that role had the title of General Counsel and Vice President of Legal Services. So I'm very proud to say that we do have that role filled officially now. Where is she? She?
She's right in the back.
So thank you. I want to report out a couple instances of requests for information and I'll just go down by my, by my memory. Trustee Mosip asked for information about a rather large mandatory transfer in our last financial statement of the last fiscal year. And Trustee Mosip, Vice President Sattkovsky and I have been digging through the details and my plan is to give a spreadsheet of a detail of what that large number came from. My plan is to give that to the board sometime in the next two weeks. I've, I've, we've, we've built it now and I'm going to report it out to the entire board and I'll be happy to answer any questions once I'm able to report that. But I know, Trustee Mosip, that you've exercised your patience while you've been waiting for that response and I haven't given up on giving you the details.
Thank you.
I don't remember if it was Trustee Mosip or Trustee Barry, but it may have been someone else that mentioned in, in a board report last time regarding the aggregate amount for the marketing budget. And I plan to outline that that was my error in the, in the board report. But I don't expect it to be anything other than my error in not bringing the number to the back of the paper. And I'll outline that detail for you in my next report to the board. But I appreciate, I don't remember.
I think it was me.
Oh, okay. Trustee McDonald. Trustee McDonald, I appreciate you bringing that up and I'm happy to report that it was simply my typographical error. Trustee Lane, about five months ago, you were very concerned about the enrollment plan and process and I promised you in six months I'd have a report for the board on our plan to go forward with enrollment. We're still working on that and by my count, my report to you all is due in October and I plan to make good on that report. I'll address the chair about whether that's best in a update to the board or a presentation to the board. But I have not forgotten about that request, Trustee Lane. You may have received an email, you did receive an email from me this morning regarding a board report that was in the packet for you all this board meeting. And that was Board Report 4528. And I made a change to that board report this morning that, that omitted two bits of information. One was regarding a personnel action that was not complete and I, I did not find it appropriate to disclose that information and so I changed the board report and reissued it on that front. And then candidly, on the back of that report, before I amended it, there was a description of our erstwhile colleague, Randall Ironman, that I, I didn't want in a board report. I wanted to make a public statement myself about that man and his, his loss. Because I decided to change those things, it occurred to me that it might be a time for me to ask the Policy Committee about what, what we should put in our staff recommendations and what we're required to legally. And I have asked the Policy Subcommittee to allow me several weeks to evaluate what we're obligated to report in, in a recommendation if we should change our, our historical practices. I certainly recognize that this information is public information and if, and if any citizen were interested in this, I would completely meet our obligations under the Freedom of Information Act that applies to this institution. And the board, of course, would be entitled to this information. My, my inquiry is merely to evaluate what type of information we should overtly push out to the public when it involves, one, something that's not obligated to be pushed out and two, could be part of some sensitive information that an employee might have. And I give another example of if an employee had exercised their right to have a leave to protect a family's health or something, a family member's health. There, there may be instances where our past practice would be to overtly push that information into the public sphere where it, it may not be in the best practice anymore. So Madam Chair, the chair of the Policy Subcommittee has taken my request to have that be on her docket and that is a background to what I have amended as a board report 4528 for this board meeting. And the final thing I'll say is it is my pride and privilege to announce new people who are my new colleagues and some who have moved up in the ranks. So the first is someone who's new to our institution that I'm proud of and if, of course, the, the board does look favorably upon this recommendation.
I was going to say, have we already voted on these individuals?
You, you haven't, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pressure you now. Hearing no objections to this, I, I do feel comfortable saying that I'm, I'm proud that we hired a Detroit Promise coach who is grant-funded. And that means that philanthropy is supporting this, this salary. And of course, this position supports our Detroit Promise students to kind of get through the hurdles of college. And this is a competitive position. It's one that we're excited about. And I just met my new colleague and I'm going to ask you to stand now, Elise Hogan. And last but not least, you all remember Alda Casares. She left our institution recently to go to Oakland University. And it's a, it's a point of pride when we were able to recruit from within. Dr. Gonco and Amy Clark are examples of that, but keeping in, in keeping- Dr. Gonco and Amy Clark are examples of that, but keeping in, in keeping with that, I know Dr. Herbst is very proud of the person we selected to take Alda's position as the student conduct and compliance, I'm sorry, supervisor of student conduct and compliance. That is also in your staff recommendation. She is, is a person who is right now the Assistant Manager of Student Conduct and Compliance and if the board is going to look favorably upon that, then I'm going to ask Manura Cassine to stand up and to be recognized. Madam Chair, I appreciate your indulgence with the time and that is my update.
Thank you very much, President Cavalluna. All right, next item, please.
Special Report, Henry Ford College Early and Middle College Trade School Program, Board Report 4524.